Good afternoon, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners work session for Wednesday, April 28, 2021. It is 2:00 PM. My name is Kai Menter, Chair of the Board. We have Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Carolina Mejia, as well as County Manager Mira Chavez, and a host of folks from our Public Works Department. The topic for the work session is Transportation Impact Fee Study Update. We have public access through our county YouTube channel, a live stream or a conference call option at 360-252-9020. The pin is 1234. And I'll let the County Manager introduce our topic. I know we've had a number of briefings on this topic.
Yeah, thank you Commissioners. As you stated, a couple of briefings on this topic starting last year. But for the benefit of Commissioner Mejia, the first time that she heard this issue was on March 24, 2021. That was the last briefing. As a result of that briefing, there were some specific questions they would like to explore. And Estefan is going to walk you through some of that. At this point, not necessarily today, but I will bring this item for a decision point next coming Tuesday during the agenda setting. And I will ask the Board as to how they'd like to proceed with this particular proposal. So with that in mind, Jennifer taking over, taking up, or Scott?
It will be Mr. Lindblum.
Mr. County Engineer.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time this afternoon. To start out, I'd just like to introduce some of the folks that are on the call here that have been really key to helping put this traffic impact fee study update together as well as the briefing. So we have our Traffic Engineer Matt Unzeman, Becky Kahn, and our Traffic Department as well, Todd Mason in our Development and Review Section. We've got Kendra and Daniel, both with Fair and Peers that have been a huge help in helping us pull together and pull together this information, help us get the information that hopefully is responsive to the questions that you had. So as the County Manager mentioned, this is a follow-up to the March 24, 2021 briefing we had. And in that, the Board requested that Public Works return with some information on some additional topics that came up during that discussion. So today, what we'd like to do is walk you through some of that information, hopefully all of it, looking at what projects have used TIF funding. I'll look at other potential funding sources, rates for ADUs. I have a discussion on low-income households and the exemptions for that, and also look at options for rates. And in the end, we will be seeking your direction on the traffic impact fee rates and any exemptions or reductions the Board so chooses. So next slide, please. So as you're aware, Thurston County is in a rapid growth curve. By the year 2040, which I used to think was a long time ago, but it's really only about 19 years away, we expect to see 70,000 more people living in the county. That includes the cities, but 70,000 more people that will be using their roads, using the services that the county provides. To put that in perspective, that is really leading to a county population by 2040 of 370,700 people, based on Thurston Regional Planning Council's population estimates. That's the equivalent of adding another Lacey and another Tumwater onto our existing road system. And again, that does include the counties as well. You'll notice that what appears to be a discrepancy in that first bullet, first and second bullets, how can we have a 26% increase in the population and yet see 40% increase in vehicle trips? Well, with all those 76,000 more humans that will be in the county, that will also generate more traffic due to more jobs, more deliveries, more school buses, et cetera. So we know that growth is coming, or we can at least reasonably expect it to come. So really, we have two options that we can really look at that are the most likely options. The first option to deal with the additional people and the great increase in vehicle trips is to increase the capacity of our existing roadway. Should we choose not to do that, another option is to decrease the level of service on our roadways. In a plain sense, what that means is we accept more congestion on our roads. Next slide, please. So one of the questions that the Board had last time is really looking at what projects that we've completed, are we reimbursing using traffic impact fee funding? The specific list of projects is on page two of your briefing paper. But really, what it provides us an opportunity to do is to show geographically in the county that these projects have been throughout the county, whether it's in the west, central, south, southeast, southwest, or kind of in the core of the county. Thus far, eight projects have received traffic impact fee funding to date, being reimbursed $800,000. And we expect to reimburse another $1 million of projects. Those projects were completed from 2016 to 2020. We do expect impact fees to fund many of these projects over the next few years. And what's really important to note is that these impact fees were critical in helping us leverage local money to be competitive for and receive state and federal grants. So just touching on a few of those that might jump out on the map, but you may not exactly be familiar with where exactly these projects are or what roads they're on. A couple I'd just like to highlight are the Delphi Road Project in the western part of the county that was extending from 62nd Avenue all the way up to State Route 101. Veil Road Project in the southeast part of the county. And the Yelm Highway Capacity Projects, which really was on Yelm Highway from Orvis Court to Rich Road. Next slide, please. So in addition to the projects where we are reimbursing with traffic impact fee funding, where we have several projects going on right now that have been using traffic impact fee funding and have been critical again to helping us get that funding for, from state and federal grants. We have nine projects currently in the works right now. Spent thus far $1.73 million of impact fee funding. As those projects continue through construction and complete construction, we already have nearly $4 million of additional impact fee funding programmed on these projects. And again, there's nine projects and you can see on the grant or on the map right there. Again, these are also scattered around the county. Projects down at Old 99 and Tilly Road. Mullin Road is a large construction project we have going on right now. A future project we've also used the traffic impact fee money to leverage for state grants is on Little Rock Road and 113th Avenue. So again, those projects are also listed on page two of your briefing packet. Next slide, please. So we talked briefly about what projects we are reimbursing, what projects we have going on. But our list really continues as we are programming future years of work with traffic impact fee funding. So we've got six projects planned out right now with planned expenditures of $1.75 million. This is through 2021 through 2024. What might be a little bit deceptive perhaps is we also have projects programmed beyond that time. But at this point, we have not started construction or started planning or design for those. But they're under Transportation Impact Fee Program, excuse me, Transportation Improvement Program. And we fully expect these projects to begin over the next few years. That will then add to the need for the traffic impact fees. Next slide, please. So what I just touched on was perhaps a little bit of a teaser on that. So as we look at this bar chart, it appears that we have this great need peaking in 2022 with decreased need beyond that. Well, that's a little bit deceptive because as I mentioned, we've got several projects already programmed for the years 2023, 2024, and beyond, where we just haven't started those projects yet. So this is a normal cycle of how we look at expenditures on our projects. My guess is if we're to look at the same bar graph in one year from now, I would expect that peak to be probably not 2022 as it shows this year, but likely 2023. And if we wait two more years, I expect, fully expect that bar graph to again be bumped back out just a couple of years. So it always looks like, or it may look like there's this decreased need for impact fees out in the future. But really, that's more just an indication of how far out we plan projects and how well far out we program the traffic impact fee funding. So it's not uncommon to see the same level of funding, excuse, same level of planning and expenditures for all projects, really regardless of funding source. Next slide, please. So one of the other things that Commissioners asked us to do is come back with an opportunity to highlight a few different potential funding sources to help address this need for investing in our road system. Some of this information we went over at a planning session, I believe it was on the 16th. So it might be a bit of a rehash, but I think it's worth bringing up here. As we talked about in that meeting, again, I believe it was the 16th, the Transportation Benefit District is an option the Board has should the Board so choose to use it. The likely methods of financing a TBD would be the sales and use tax, which would generate about $2.1 million annually, as well as vehicle license fees, which would generate about $2.3 million. Vehicle license fee, again, same as a car tab. Real estate excise tax is another source of money that could be used for transportation projects. But certainly allocating REIT funds toward transportation projects would make less REIT money available for other eligible projects. The Board has the option of pursuing a local option motor vehicle fuel tax, which would generate about $5 million annually. That $5 million was based on a 2009 estimate from the Transportation Resource Manual. Really, what this would do is would add a local gas tax within Thurston County. Again, that would generate just over $5 million based on a somewhat outdated estimate. Now, this is an option that should the Board so choose to do, would require a vote of the people to do that. Finally, there is an option that the Board could also do to reduce the road fund diversion and levy shift. This is an option that we've discussed before. However, as you're certainly aware, if that road fund diversion and levy were to reduce, that would certainly make less funding available for other critical components and programs the county has, much like the REIT. Next slide, please. So I want to jump to the ADU discussion. I think this was a really interesting discussion we had on March 24. One of the things we did in the meantime, since that March 24 briefing is look at what other agencies are doing right now. So to start with Thurston County, we currently do not have a policy for how to charge traffic impact fees for ADUs. But looking what our neighboring jurisdictions do, you can see there's a variety of ways that Olympia, Pierce County, and the cities have chosen to do it, ranging anywhere from a 37% reduction in Tumwater all the way up to 100% reduction in the city of Lacey. And the justification for reducing these fees is really that ADUs typically generate fewer trips than a single-family house. For example, as you're aware, ADUs are often or can be used by seniors, smaller families, et cetera. And they're really just a smaller dwelling unit on an already existing single-family house lot. And the example what we have here is the, just an example. If the county chose to do two things. First, the single-family rate of $3,050 listed for Thurston County assumes that the traffic impact fees would be adjusted and then reduced at a 50% level as we had discussed before. That further 50% reduction would, again, just as an example of what the rates would be if the county so chose to reduce the ADU rates, or excuse me, the traffic impact fee rates for ADUs in Thurston County. The amount of reduction, whether it's 0 to 100% is something the Board can choose at their discretion. Just for situational awareness, to date, we've had one project that I'm aware of that's come through recently with an ADU. It was charged with a single-family rate. Next slide, please. Another interesting discussion we had at our March briefing was the discussion on low-income housing exemption. As you're aware, a state law does allow the county to have a reduction in impact fees up to 80%. This was based on a state law that was enacted after we adopted our last rate study back in 2012. Other agencies we've checked in with have enacted reductions anywhere from 0 to 100%. And they have often done this as part of their rate studies. So again, 0 to 80% reduction would have no financial impact on the county in the sense that we would not have to come up with other ways to pay money back. But if the Board chose to go to 100%, that extra 20% is something that the Board or the county would have to pay back from some other non-impact fee account. Next slide, please. So when we look at our rad options, and this is essentially what we presented in March, but I think it's worth kind of going over at a very high level. As we discussed, the traffic impact fee study we did recently found a maximum defensible rate of $6,100 per single-family house. The current traffic impact fee rate now, we provide for a 50% reduction in our maximum defensible rate to what the impact fees are now. Were we to follow that same approach, that 50% maximum fee would really be reduced to about, on average, $3,000 per new single-family house. So certainly, the Board has every opportunity to provide staff different directions on how to update these fees. But really, today, what we'd be looking for is direction on options perhaps one, two, or three, and also direction on how the Board would like to address ADUs, whether there's a reduction, and if so, how much? And the low-income housing exemption. And again, if there's, the Board would like a reduction. And by how much? Next slide, please. So when we talk about rates, again, I think this is a really important slide to go back to because you may recall that the impact fee rates vary by different parts of the county. It's based on the traffic distribution patterns and the number of capacity projects. I guess really the number and the cost of the capacity projects in each area. Were these rates to be enacted, three areas of the county will see impact fees decrease. That's in the central, east, and east UGAs in west county. I guess that would be four. The three areas that will see the impact fees increased is the north, northwest, and south and south UGAs. Next slide, please. So to put things in perspective, to see how this would stack up with other agencies in western Washington, we did look at what a 50% reduction would mean when compared to other agencies around. If we did take that 50% reduction, we'd be generally consistent with Olympia and Tumwater, higher than Lacey and Snohomish County, and much lower than Pierce County. I did have an opportunity to talk with the Kitsap County Engineer earlier this week because as you may recall, Kitsap County, and as you can see from the map or the graph, Kitsap County is remarkably low. Well, just last week, Kitsap County got their draft study back to update their impact fees. Again, that report was just completed last week. And that study proposed a fee of $4,300. So which, if they did that, would certainly bring it higher than all but Pierce County. What I'm not clear on at this time is if that is reflective of any reduction or not. That information was just hot off the press on Tuesday. So what you'll see though, is that bar graph will likely increase dramatically from the, looks like about $600, $600 mark for Kitsap, which would then bring the average up that's shown on the graph. Next slide, please. So that brings us to today, where we're looking for some direction from the Board and certainly leave it wide open to comments and conversation. As I know, there will be some good questions and some good questions of the ADUs and the low-income housing and anything else that might be in here. So should the Board choose to move ahead, these are kind of the next steps that would happen. Once the Board gave us direction to move forward, if they so chose, we would prepare for a public hearing on the proposed impact fees. Then at which point the Board could consider adopting by resolution. And if all that went through, Public Works would then work with CPED to update the new rates in the new fee schedules. And with that, that is the end of the formal briefing, which gives us plenty of time for a robust discussion.
Thank you, Scott. It may be that I'm hearing it for the fourth time, so I'm finally getting it, but I feel like that was the best, most organized and concise overview that we've had of this kind of complex topic. I appreciate that. Okay, I guess I'll ask the County Manager if he has a suggestion for how we want to get to where we need to go at the end of this discussion.
Yeah, Commissioners, this is really, if you have any particular questions to the traffic impact fee, this is the time for you to fully get perhaps all the gaps in your knowledge base of related to this particular proposal. And then, and again, I will, I will bring this item for your May 4 agenda setting for the Board to provide direction. And the question that I have maybe to begin the conversation, I guess for Scott is the traffic impact fee needs to be updated and it's because of, and this is my words, okay? The risk of projects completed, they will continue to charge those impact fees. Is that correct? So there is a need to update the project list?
Yes, I was looking for my mute button. I apologize. Yes, the project list we have is certainly outdated now, and there certainly is a risk of somebody challenging that. An example of that would be that projects on the project list from 2013, some have been completed, some have been dropped, and also new projects have been added. So the list is out of date. And I think the updated list to reflect the current proposed rates would be perhaps a way to reduce the risk of the traffic impact fees being challenged, yes.
Okay, thank you. It's really here. I saw your hand.
Yes, I would like some clarification, so Commissioner Menter made me feel bad of the... But I want to see what kind of decision do you, are you needing? Is it for the, because I saw kind of two things and, you know, is it for the ADUs? Or is it for the single dwelling? Or is it for, or the single-family homes? I apologize. Or is it for both?
It's really up to the Board. I guess what we would like direction on is certainly updating the impact fee program. And then get some direction from the Board on how you would like us to incorporate exemptions or reductions for low-income housing and/or ADUs. As you're aware, right now, we don't have a policy on how to address ADUs. And lacking that policy going forward, we will be billing or charging ADUs a single-family rate, which is not necessarily reflective of the real demands on the road system. So again, that reduction for ADUs is at a level that the Board could set if they so chose. And also the low-income housing as well. Right now, we would not have a reduction for low-income housing. I know it's very important for the Board, so that level 0 to 100%, or 0 to 80% is something that the Board could so choose to do as well.
Maybe a little clarification. There's a couple level of decision-making the Board is considering at this point. One is you have provided the information updating the traffic impact fee as a whole. I believe that is needed because we need to update the projects. The next decision is whether you, the Board, would like to implement the maximum defensible rate. The other option the Board has, and I believe that is what Estefan is proposing, suggesting, is not to utilize the maximum defensible rate by going with 50% reduction. And that's where we are right now on the current impact fees. It's the 50% reduction. So if the Board decides on the 50% reduction, it's the same path that we currently have right now. After the Board decides on whether the 50% reduction, something like to move forward, then will you exercise your decision-making process related to, do you like to consider an additional reduction related to ADUs? And an additional reduction related to low-income housing? So is that level of decision-making process the Board needs to take next Tuesday?
Commissioner Mejia, I would throw in that if you look at, if you look at slide 13 in your packet, which is the bar graphs that go across the jurisdictions. Are you there?
Yes, sir.
So you'll see that if we maintain the current reduction, it still upticks a little because of the update of the project list and the total update of the program. But it's basically following, as Ramiro said, the same path. We have the legal ability to go all the way up to double that. Or all the way down to, you know, less than that, but but the project list sort of dictates the range, and then the current path, so to speak, the current formula has been 50% of max. And we're being asked to decide whether to continue with that, which would be the last bar, orange bar, which would put us, again, almost exactly with Olympia and Tumwater versus kind of chew on.
Right.
And I, I'll go to Commissioner Edwards. I have some questions about the multifamily issue, but I'll go to Commissioner Edwards if he has a question.
I've actually got five questions. I guess we've got some time. On page eight, you mentioned on the fuel tax per gallon that it'd generate $5 million. What's that based on? A penny a gallon? Two cents? What is it?
That is based on a percentage of the, it's equal to a state percent of the statewide motor vehicle fuel tax. And I believe the gas tax has gone up since 2009. That's why I wanted to make sure that that $5 million was referenced to a study that is now, or a manual that is now 12 years old. So at that time, it was about $5 million. That manual has not been updated, so I don't have a real good...
But how much a gallon, how much would a citizen have to pay more per gallon to do something like that?
So if it's 10% of the state gas tax, and I think that's 49, so about 4.9 cents. And don't quote me on that, but it's on that quarter.
Say five cents.
As of 2019, I'm looking at the state revenue guide. As of 2019, the state gas tax was 49.4 cents. And the option for a local government is 10% of the state, which would be 4.94 cents, so about five cents a gallon.
So every penny generates a million dollars, maybe? Is that what you're hearing?
That estimate was, is 10 years old, and we can't use that to compare to what we might collect today. I would say though, that absolutely no jurisdiction is collecting this tax. Two counties, Spokane and Snohomish, tried to assess it and put it on the ballot, but both measures failed. So no one else is doing this.
And on page nine, on the ADUs, the 1,525, how did that come about? Just a split of some kind or something?
50% of the 3,050.
Okay, well, how did the 3,000 come about?
That's 50% of the maximum allowable defensible.
Okay, that's...
So that's the proposal from Estefan for the Board to consider.
Okay, and so the ADU rate that others are showing here, that's their actuals right now? Lacey doesn't charge anything right now?
That's correct.
Olympia's $1,000. Tumwater's 25. Okay. On page 10, I wasn't clear about that low-income one. The 100%, you do something, 80%, you're allowed to do something else. That really didn't make sense to me. Is there any chance you could clarify a little bit what that is?
Yeah, and I might look to Daniel for that, for some additional information. Daniel, can you help me out there?
I can help you.
Or Kendra?
Yes. So that comes straight out of...
Yes. So that comes straight out of the state law that kind of provides guidance on impact fee. And essentially, when you're asking about the 80% and the 20%, I recognize that's confusing. First of all, state law defines what housing that is affordable to a low-income family looks like. And so it determines, and I don't have the code right in front of me, but it's essentially having less than 80% of the median household income that it's affordable to that. And that's, that's calculated on 30% of that. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of numbers here, but essentially it says that you're making considerably less than median household income within the county that you reside in. And then of that, it's housing that is affordable to you. So that's calculated by 30% of that income amount. So that's kind of what the, the median rent rate would be that's affordable to that group. In terms of, I think, your question, in terms of the 80% versus the 20%, what state law allows is for, to, to essentially incentivize and ensure that low-income housing is affordable to develop. It allows jurisdictions to waive 80% of the impact fee that would otherwise be charged to that development. So we're talking about your standard single-family rate, whatever single-family rate that you guys have elected. And that's again, based on whether you choose the fully defensible rate or you choose something that's less than that. You can actually waive 80% of whatever they would be charged for that development. State law does require that 20% of the fee get paid into impact fee accounts. And you have some choices. One, you could choose, you could choose just to charge low-income housing 20% of the rate, so a 20% rate. Or like some other jurisdictions, you can elect not to charge them anything, but you would have to reimburse that 20% of the impact fee amount from other non-impact fee accounts, just to make sure that your impact fee program remains whole and can deliver, can continue to deliver projects. Now, if the follow-up question is, why 80%? Why not 75%? Why not 50%? I don't know the answer to that, but that 80% is the number that is prescribed in state law. So I hope that helps to clarify a little bit.
That, that gets me kind of there. How many jurisdictions, how many county jurisdictions are doing this that we could look at for an example?
Traffic impact fee?
Yeah, well, the.
Oh, they, they accept exemptions.
Yeah, the exemption.
Okay, I got it.
And I'll, I'll start to answer that. Daniel might know some of the specifics. I will say not. So you're not required as a jurisdiction to include that provision. So I, there's a number of cities that have.
Are there any counties? That's what I'm wondering about. Any counties?
Yeah, so we, we did take a, a very quick look. We don't have a comprehensive list right now, Commissioner, but Pierce County does completely exempt low-income housing, for example. Olympia, I believe, does 80%. And, and we can look into some additional locations if you have other examples that you'd like us to look up. It's just a little bit of a research project for us to find it under code, what they're exempting.
That's fine. I'm just, just looking for clarification. How about on page 11, on the rate options? So the maximum rate is the $6,100? And we're charging half of that now? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, right now, we are charging 50% of the maximum allowable rate. The options presented there reflect the numbers from the updated studies. So the $6,100 would be the maximum defensible rate based on the current project list. And then again, 50% of that represents option number two, which is $3,050.
And for how long have we been charging that 50%?
Since the program was developed back in 2013. I think it was the first year we collected traffic impact fee money.
It was established in 2011 and started collecting in 2013.
Okay. The graph that we were given starts in 2016. Was there a reason, or we just didn't start investing in roads until 2016? Is that what it is? We started gathering money, but we didn't really make expenditures yet?
Page seven?
On page seven, yeah.
Yeah, 2016 was the first year we started expending money from the impact fee program.
Okay. What's in our fund right now? It seems like I remember something being talked about in the March meeting, what we had in a balance, ending fund balance, beginning fund balance, something. Where, where are we at now?
Yeah, I'm looking that up right now.
It seemed to me we had, you know, a few million dollars in there, but I don't recall what it was exactly.
Well, we can check that out and get back to it. It's written in our presentation, I believe, from last time. And I'd, maybe Matt or Becky could check that out while we're.
Scott, not to speak out of turn, but I did manage to grab that presentation. It looks like it's just under $8 million as of that presentation that we provided on April 5th.
Great. Thank you, Daniel.
So it probably hadn't changed much in that couple of weeks or whatever it is, has it?
No.
Okay. And have we earmarked that $8 million for projects already? That's already been spoken for, or so to speak?
Yeah, we've earmarked quite a bit of that. And I think one of the important things to note, too, is that, while we, I don't believe have earmarked all 8 million or so of the traffic impact fee funding, we do use that as a match for future projects when they come up for grant opportunities. So having a, a small or modest balance in that account for each of those different areas of the county really helps us be competitive when those grant opportunities do come up. So it's, I think in a perfect sense, we would not necessarily want to be spending down all of our impact fee money because that money really, again, is critical to help us get more grant from the state and federal government.
So you use that as seed money when, when you're putting in for grants and stuff, right?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Okay, and I guess this is for the county manager. So you're expecting us to make a decision next week? Is that what you want?
Yes, sir.
And that, that decision can be increase it?
So.
Keep everything the same?
The, the, the decision, and I will guide you through this document.
Is that coming up next?
No, it's, it's in your pocket.
Oh, it's in there. Okay.
And you have the options available to you on, starting on the bottom of page four.
Four. Second, let me get four.
Is option number one is to, for to provide direction to implement a.
Okay, I, I guess I'm, okay, I'm on four. I'm, four on which group, which?
This document.
You've got that document folded over. What's the front of it?
Sorry, the briefing document.
Oh, okay. I got it here. And it is on page four? Okay, I'm there.
So on the bottom of the page, we have options. Option number one is the, the maximum defensible rate with no reductions, which is an average of $6,100.
Okay, so doubling what we're doing now is what you're saying, right?
That's the most defensible rate. The proposal and the, the recommendation from staff is you turn the page number five.
Okay.
Option number two, for the board to consider the 50% reduction, which is $3,050 as an average.
And, and that's what we're doing today? That's what's been going along for how long?
That's what the, the 50% reduction is what have been charging since 2011.
Well, I mean, right, but I mean, 50% of what's allowed is what you're saying. And we've been doing that since, what, 13 or something?
Yeah, staff is recommending to continue with the same 50% reduction. Okay?
Okay.
So those are the two options for you that I will facilitate the conversation. After the board decides on those two options, then the conversation will be, will you, what type of exceptions you'd like to introduce? One is the ADU. And if, if the board decided to exempt ADUs, the next question that I, that I have is, what percentage?
Well, exempt is exempt, or do you want to?
Well, no, it's an exception, it's a range, whether you have.
So, okay, you're gonna ask for a range of exemption.
With 100%, 80%, 50%, whatever percentage you would like to do. And the other decision point will be low-income housing exemption. And by how much? So those are the tier decision-making points that I will ask the board to take on Tuesday.
Okay, I guess if you're gonna ask for that low-income housing exemption, I need some examples. I mean, if I, I can't go by, well, we don't have this or that. Is Pierce County the only county? I'm, I'm just looking to see how it fits with those particular county jurisdictions.
We can, we can bring additional information if you, if you have time by Tuesday to give you other examples from other jurisdictions. You heard the Pierce County exempt low-income housing by 100%.
100%, okay.
But I believe, but, but I believe Pierce County supplements the 20% with the road fund. So that is the thing. If you exempt 100% of low-income housing from impact fees, we need to supplement with other funding the 20%.
Could you give me a couple of examples of how many houses are built under the exemption possibility?
Oh, that is, that is, that is a very high, difficult question to answer, Commissioner Rutter, but there is no way that I can give you that answer.
So we'd be pat, tack, adding a tax on something we don't even have an answer to? No, no.
No, this is, this is an allowance. Let's say a developer comes, for instance, and said, I'm planning, I'm planning to build 10 units, as an example. Out of those 10, out of those 10 units, two are slated to be low-income. So those two units will be, go under that exemption the board may consider, whether it's 100%, 80%. That's how the, the process will work. Because the other eight units are not slated to be low-income, they will be going by the normal traffic impact fee schedule. That makes sense.
So just to clarify that, we are not, we, we currently do not have a program.
No, you, right now, there is no exemptions on, on the traffic impact fees. No, this is new.
So this, this would be us creating a tax break if we want to.
Right.
For low-income, incentivize low-income development up to 80% or 100% if we want to pay the last 20% to, in order to get these units built. That would be something we could consider. We're not doing it right now.
On, on point, Commissioner. Right now, the current impact fee schedule does not have any exemptions. In ADUs or low-income. We, we don't have that. This is new for you to consider.
And do we have some examples that we could look at that are an example of a small development? I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be taking place in the urban growth area. And, and then somebody specifically said this is going to be for low-income? And then, I don't know, what's a low-income, a house, apartment, a duplex? What's that gonna be? I'm just trying to think of what the break might be or the incentive might be to encourage people to build some decent, affordable housing. We don't have that? This is kind of for, just put something in place for the future?
Yes, sir. It's, it's an allowance for somebody as an incentive, for somebody who can come and claim a low-income housing. This is really looking into the future as an incentive.
Might, might we have future time? If you're gonna think about doing this on Tuesday, are we gonna have more discussion on, once we've had time to kick it around and ask maybe the master builders what they think or, or?
I think the master builder's already sent a letter, didn't they?
Yeah, the master builder did send a letter of support for the.
50%.
Yeah, impact fee program last year had a 50% reduction.
Yeah, but what about the low-income housing or what? Did they, did they address that?
They did not address ADUs or low-income housing in their letter of support.
I can't imagine they wouldn't support a further reduction.
That's, that's an additional incentive, a, a applause from their, their support. So there is not an add-on taxes, it's a break, an additional break to them if they like to go with the ADUs and low-income housing.
Robin, your hand was up a long time ago and I was letting Commissioner Edwards finish his questions. Go ahead.
No, thank you. I think anything I would have to add has been addressed.
And again, that's my, that's my proposal to bring this conversation to May 4th, to, for the board to provide direction. But if the board wants more time.
That's your privy.
I, I don't know. I mean, I'm just wondering, what's the deadline? Is there, what is the rush? Is there a, if we don't do it by May 4th, we get a demerit? Or can we do it a couple meetings later? I'm just trying to figure out, okay, we're getting this information. Now we're gonna make a discussion, decision, and we're gonna have some discussion on it. I kind of know where I'm at on the ADUs. I don't know if we're ready for that.
No, on Tuesday, please. On, on Tuesday, on Tuesday. If, if that is the desire of the board. That's my proposal. It's just my proposal. Addressing the timeline, we have been discussing this traffic impact fee for just about a year.
I think more than a year. I was actually surprised. I thought we decided it last year. I frankly didn't realize that we didn't make a decision. So this is a long, the basic scheme and the 50% and all that, we've been kicking around for a super long time. I'm not trying to rush anybody, for no reason, he is new, but this is not new. Now that, you know, if we want to do a new program for low-income, that's, that's somewhat new and whatnot. But, but I think that, you know, I don't know if there's a deadline per se, but we definitely have gotten this presented multiple times.
Well, I, I think last year, we just opted to continue at the half rate, the 50% of max.
No, no, sir.
No, I haven't.
That's not right.
And, and I think you and you, you weren't ready to make a decision and Commissioner Hutchins kind of flip-flopped and ended up deciding not to make a decision either.
Yeah, we didn't make any changes, though, right? Is that right?
There were no changes made for the traffic impact fees. The board did adopt changes for the park.
Park impact fees, that's right.
Yeah, but we didn't do any changes on this, if I remember right.
Right, which is, quite frankly, why we keep coming back to the board because we are concerned because we do want that project list updated because we are establishing fees based off of those projects and some of those projects have been constructed. So, so we are asking, you know, I'll refer to the county manager, but, but I would say as a public works director, we are asking for a decision to be made.
Well, I could make a decision right now. It'd be okay with me. I mean, I'm prepared to do that. But I, I don't, I'm just trying to figure out what the rush is. I, I don't know what ADUs ought to be. They're being proposed here at half. I, I think most ADUs are gonna be such a, a small issue. I'd probably be comfortable with 25% or something toward, to get something out of it to make it comparable to other stuff, but I can imagine, I can't imagine there's gonna be that many trips from ADUs because I think a senior's living in most of them. Anyway, I'm, I'm okay. Whatever you guys are ready to vote, I can vote.
Well, let's just go with the county managers. Give ourselves a time to think about it and then we'll go with it on Tuesday.
I, I will encourage you to do that, looking at the, the options that I highlighted on, on the briefing document, page four and five. And also think in, in terms of what you already think, Commissioner Edwards, on the, on the exceptions for ADU, ADUs and what percentage. Think in those terms and also think in terms of the next decision point of low-income. And what percentage and the reduction for low-income housing you would like to implement as a board?
It would sure help me if, in making that decision, if I could look at an example of a low-income house, how that benefited somebody to rent or somebody to buy. I just don't, I don't really understand that completely about the benefit. I'm trying to think of a benefit. So when a citizen buys it, they're gonna be, it's gonna be more affordable, more attainable for that citizen that's got a limited or a lower income.
That, that is the objective. Absolutely. For instance, the, the seat of Olympia. For instance, the, the city of Olympia has partnered with developers, and there's a lot of housing downtown, right? And the developer has set aside what they call a certain amount of units as a low-income. They allow citizens with low-income to access those housing units. As a result of that, those units will pay less traffic impact fees based on the table that you provided today. It's an incentive.
I just don't see much of that kind of building going on in the unincorporated area, but I'm sure it would take place in the urban growth area.
So that's an option. If you don't like to have an exception on low-income, that's the decision of the board.
Well, I mean, do we have anything like going on in rural America that's low-income? It's, wouldn't it be in the urban growth area?
Yeah, I think you're right, Commissioner, but we, we're in control of the urban growth area.
Yeah, that's your purview. You don't want to implement a low-income housing exemption?
It's not that I don't want to, I want to make sure it all fits, that's all.
Todd, you had your hand up.
Isn't there a significant amount of development going on down in the Rochester area?
Grand Mound's an urban growth area.
Grand Mound, yep.
That'd be...
Could you tell me about that? I'm not sure I'm up on that, just mention it.
I just am curious. It was my understanding that there was a lot of housing being built in Rochester.
Yeah, but is some of it designated as low-income housing? That's what I'm wondering.
It could be.
It could be?
And if it was, they could get a break under this program, should you so choose.
So nothing will happen, there won't be any money generated if there is no low-income housing going on though, right? I'm trying to think of where there is some low-income housing, where this would be applicable.
By who, Commissioner?
In the unincorporated area of Thurston County. I would think more likely it would be in the urban growth areas. And if, you know, I know Rochester has an urban growth area, so to speak, it's not a municipality. But I'm not aware of anything, and I think of that type of housing more as apartments, maybe duplexes. I just don't know the answer to that yet.
Part of having a reduction is to incentivize developers to build low-income housing. I mean, that's really, so it's not so much, I mean, the benefit is to those individuals to have a place to live that fall under that bracket. But the incentive comes at the front end for the developer to make the decision, pencil it out, I'm gonna develop low-income housing because I get, you know, it pencils out versus I'm gonna develop market-rate housing.
Is this applicable to a single-family home that might be built on a property, a lot? I don't know, a half-acre lot, I don't know. Is this, and then if that is the case, what would that, what, if we implemented this, how much would it reduce the price of the house? Would it knock it down by the $3,100 or the... I just, I don't have that in front of me right now.
That would be up to the seller.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out to really quantify something here.
It really depends on, on if they've owned the property, if they own it free and clear, what profit margin they want to make, what their costs are. I mean, I think that would be...
We couldn't speculate on that.
And we don't have any examples, huh?
I can speak a little bit to the state guidance. So in order to provide that reduction and for the jurisdiction not, you know, to need to backfill those 80% of funds, most, most examples of code that I've seen does include that there would be essentially a covenant to ensure that that housing remains affordable to, again, families or households that are within that qualifying income bracket. So I think to your point, in terms of benefit to individuals that are needing low or qualifying for low-income housing, it ensures that those units are affordable to them. Now, how many are occurring in the county? I think we don't have an answer to that. But I think to the point of Ms. Walker, the point there is that we are reducing kind of the barriers to developing that, that type of housing, incentivizing it such that, I think that's just in line with, you know, kind of overall county goals for providing affordable housing. It's, I would say, it's just one of the many tools in your toolbox for ensuring affordability, but it's just saying that your impact fee program is also aligned with that overall goal of providing affordability. So that's, I don't know if there's anything more specific that we can provide, but I think the language that's in the state statute helps that some.
I guess what I'd like to hear, if we could hear this, if the Olympia master builders, they're the ones that are building most of these homes, I guess, if, if they wrote a letter and said, "Well, we want us to keep it the same," okay, that's one thing. They didn't know we were gonna do ADUs and low-income housing, it sounds like, maybe because they didn't address it. Why couldn't we contact them and have them give us an example? Would you support this or not? I guess I can call the president of that group and ask them what they think about it, but usually they like to kick things around. And maybe they could give an example of how much that would save, how much that would shave off the price of a house if we exempted, I don't know, 100% for low-income housing. But it sounds like you don't want to do that because then you have to dig some money out elsewhere. So even if we did 50% on low-income housing, how much would that knock the price of housing down to make it supposedly more affordable? Because quite frankly, I don't see very much affordable housing out there. And I'd like to have an example to point to. Or a group that does this, make a recommendation.
Commissioner, we got three minutes?
No, we're not gonna get there.
Todd, I'm sorry, I've seen him stand up for quite a long time, and I'm gonna insist that he get a chance to say what he needs to say.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, just to point a clarification, when Scott had mentioned about the one ADU that has been charged, that's in reference, and I think ADUs have kind of come to the surface because, you know, we've now allowing them in the rural areas. But ADUs have been permitted through the county in the UGAs. And since impact fees have been established in our code, ADUs are exempt from school impact fees, but all the other impact fees are applicable. So since 2012 or so, the ADUs that have come through have been charged the full single-family impact fee for traffic.
And when you say the full fee, is that the full 50% of what is allowed?
Yes, the established fee for single-family houses.
It only reduced 50%.
Okay, okay, thank you, good.
So if I may, Commissioner?
Go ahead, Ramire, we got two minutes.
Yeah, so I will bring this item unless the board tells me otherwise on next coming Tuesday. And I will facilitate the decision-making process as I stated today. And we'll go from there.
Sounds good. Bring our voting caps on Tuesday, and it's time for phone calls or further discussions needed. And we are adjourned, the board will be back in two minutes for a different topic.